We want to welcome those that are joining us for our special meeting today. We know that there's over a hundred registered, so I'm just letting the numbers come up. We're actually start right on time for this meeting. So I know that there's a hundred. We're only showing about forty right now. So just give us a few minutes. Make sure everyone that is registered is logged on and able to hear us, and then we'll get started. So please just bear with us for a few more moments. Like to welcome everyone to the Seneca Valley School District School Board Special Meeting of February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one. I am the President of School Board Eric Petulio. And at this time, I would ask that you all join me in a moment of silence in memory of all the lives lost due to COVID nineteen and in reflection of those who are mourning loved ones recovering from the illness or have been natively impacted during this time. Thank you very much. At this time, if you're able, I'd ask that you all rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time of our roll call, Lisa, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Bradel.
Here.
Mr. Detullio.
Here.
Ms. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Hester.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Nickle.
President.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Widow.
Here.
Mr. Wooderson.
They will begin our meeting with the information reports. This will be a COVID nineteen update from Dr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Detullio. Good afternoon. Yesterday, the Pennsylvania Department of Education moved Butler County officially to the moderate transmission level. Now typically, the transmission levels are updated typically on a Friday, and it is for the week moving past. It is not moving forward. So that means we've already been in moderate for a week. It was not updated, I suspect, due to the government holiday on Monday. So they moved us yesterday officially to moderate as a county. It appears that late in the day that was moved. So I wanted to point that out if people are looking at that on the public data dashboard, and that is moved by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. I also had a Zoom meeting with the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the Pennsylvania Department of Health, and all the schools' superintendents in Butler County Tuesday at nine AM. There were a number of other counties that were invited and superintendents that joined us as well. I had taken notes from that that I wanted to share with the board and share with the public. The meeting was held by Matt Stem and Dr. Sherry Smith, who are both practitioners in the field from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. As many of you know, our Secretary of Education has moved on, resigned and moved on, but our new secretary, it's an acting Secretary of Education, Noe Ortega. We have not officially met him, but we know we have received correspondence from him. So his deputies are Matt and Sherry, and they have been advocating for public schools, following the data and sharing that data with us as frequently as they possibly can. Yesterday, they talked about accelerated learning, and they talked about learning gaps, and they gave ideas for school districts to address those potential learning gaps with students in light of the pandemic. And next month, when we meet during our work session and regular meeting, we will be talking to the school board about summer programming and some of the things that we will be doing with the federal money that will be pushed out to school districts. To date, the Pennsylvania Department of Education is reporting that two point two billion has been pushed out to schools through S R federal money. Seneca Valley did receive a portion of that, and we have until September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty three to use that. They are indicating that the President of the United States also intends to push out more money to schools in order to buy some of the things that we need to make sure our schools are safe. Seneca Valley purchased already a number of those mitigations and Plexiglas and things of that nature, spraying machines. We talked about all of those in the summer. And so we would not be using our money towards that. We would instead be looking to use our money to address any potential learning gaps with our students. So we will be reporting that out in detail in March, and I would encourage our parents to attend virtually or in person that school board meeting. We were also told that on February twenty second, Secretary Cardone will be confirmed, or they hope that he will be confirmed at the federal level. And we were also given a vaccine update. We were told that Pennsylvania is receiving one hundred and seventy five thousand doses of the vaccine per week, but that there are over three point five million in the one A category currently. So certainly, they have concerns, and they hope that that log jam will start to open up soon. They also pointed out to us that the CDC developed and put out new school guidance as of Friday. We were aware of that, and we have been studying that at Seneca Valley. The CDC put that new guidance out Friday at two PM. It is updated guidance for how to safely open our schools, and there's quite a bit of research. It's a very lengthy document. Sherry Smith and Matt Stem went through that document over the weekend. Pennsylvania Department of Education, and that is who Matt and Sherry work for, they have analyzed that data, and they will be making recommendations to school districts about how to bring students back for more in-person learning. Several of the school superintendents asked, because we were all looking at the data, should we wait until you make your modifications? And they indicated that we should not wait, that we should make local decisions based on our county data. So I think that is important to point out. It's also important to point out, because I think sometimes we tend to, as human beings, focus on the despair. And I want to point out that as of yesterday, fifteen counties moved into moderate from substantial to moderate. Butler County was one of those, but we were not the only one. Cameron County is in the low transmission level, and there are fifty one counties still in the substantial range, but fifteen have moved to moderate. So that is certainly good news. As we continue to follow the data in my office and mine county data and zip code data, we fully anticipate as of today that we will be in moderate again this Friday. We will certainly have to wait and see, but I want to remind the public that the data that is presented is always at least one to three days behind, if not more. So we know we've been in moderate for more than a week already because we've met those thresholds. And we knew we were moving to moderate before P D E changed the website yesterday because we've been following the thresholds quite closely, and I present that data to the board on a regular basis. It's also important to point out to the board and to the public that I had my weekly joint COVID sharing call this past Monday with the Butler County Commissioners, Butler Emergency Management, Butler Hospital. We have an infectious disease expert, Dr. Love, that joins us every Monday in this call at two PM, and all seven Butler County School Superintendents. On that call, this week, we logged our fifty first meeting in collaborating since the pandemic began. And so, you know, I can honestly say it has been a very good collaboration with all of those folks at the virtual table, so to speak. Everyone in the meeting on Monday reported cautiously optimistic views, including the hospital. We are all very focused in this group on vaccine distribution, and we are beginning to plan for when the one B category opens to all of our teachers and educators in Pennsylvania. We anticipate that Butler County will stay in the moderate transmission rate again this Friday, and we are hopeful this county will continue to drive down the numbers throughout this week and continuing beyond this week. Once again, to remind you about that early warning dashboard that is put out by the Pennsylvania Department of Health and connection with the Pennsylvania Department of Education, we know the thresholds we need to meet and continue to meet are less than ten percent PCR rate and less than one hundred incident rate per one hundred thousand individuals in the county. And that's how we will continue to meet those thresholds and stay in moderate or hopefully go to low transmission rate. And I'll talk more about that data in a moment, but I do want to present that while this is all great news, my meeting with the Department of Education, my meeting with the Butler County officials on Monday. I do want to point out that as a school, we feel it is not time for us to let down our protections or our mitigations. It's not time for us to let our guard down in crowds or social gatherings. As a county, we must continue to drive down the transmission. Our schools remaining open depends absolutely on community transmission and county transmission. So let me get into that data now. The PCR positivity rate, the most recent seven days, this is February fifth through eleventh. And so, again, you see how the data is behind, but this is good news. This data, we came down the week prior from seven point four PCR rate to six point four. So we are sitting at six point four, and we expect that to be even lower this Friday. We are hopeful. As you know, this is one of several thresholds that will move us to moderate, and we had been meeting that for at least three weeks, but we needed to meet the other threshold on the incident rate. So we have been below ten percent PCR for at least three weeks now. The incident rate, most recent data on the the public data on the Pennsylvania Department of Health and Department of Education early warning dashboard, the most recent days again, recent seven days, February fifth through the eleventh per one hundred thousand residents, we were at eighty six point eight. We are down from the previous week at one hundred and seventeen point one. So just to give you an idea and a comparison, when we went fully remote in part of November and December, we were well over two hundred cases per one hundred thousand. I think there were some days without that data in front of me. We hit two thirty, two forty, and we were worried about hitting two fifty. So we do expect that this rate would continue to come down if we all do our part. The differences in confirmed cases, this is an interesting data point as well on the early warning dashboard. So here, they take the most recent seven days. When I say most recent, remember, they collect that data and they they close that data on February eleventh. So we're already missing some data this week. But we can go in and mine that data ourselves. But the most recent seven days versus the previous seven days, we were down sixty nine more cases in the county. The Butler County daily COVID rate, now this one, what we do is we go to the Pennsylvania Department of Health website, and Lisa goes in and she minds every single day at noon when this is updated. And then we use a fourteen day rolling average. Remember, the state is looking at seven days compared to seven days, but a lot of national databases look at the fourteen day rolling average, including Dr. Osterholm out of the University of Minnesota. And so our our fourteen day rolling average as of today, after Lisa pulled the total at noon, was forty two point nine. That is the lowest fourteen day rolling average we have seen since November fifth of two thousand and twenty. The zip code cases, these are important to take a look at as well, because as you know, Butler County is fairly large. We know we're pushing close to about two hundred thousand, about a hundred and eighty seven thousand people that live in Butler County, and in the Seneca Valley School District, about fifty thousand people. So we go in and we mine zip codes. We have seven school district zip codes that our students are coming from. As of this weekend, so when we looked at it on Monday morning, they collate Friday, Saturday, and Sunday data. There were twenty four new cases across three days in all seven district zip codes. As of Tuesday, there were only six cases reported in our zip codes, and that's really great news. And today, when we took a look at that, pulling all seven zip codes, all the numbers from seven zip codes, there were ten cases reported today. Again, when they're updating at noon, that's data from yesterday that's been reported. Again, we also know that's older data. So we know we've been in this stage of moderate for a while, but not officially until it was posted. It's also important to note the Seneca Valley COVID dashboard. In the entire district, we have eight active student cases. We have fifty three students in quarantine, not necessarily from school. It could be, you know, family exposure, community exposure. And we have zero active staff cases as of today. We do have four staff in quarantine. So as a district, we know that we are making progress. Certainly, this is, we want to be cautious, but this is very good news. And we know also that by staying in cohort, we're able to better contact trace or do case investigations. We are better able to keep students separated. But we also know there are pros and cons to every model. There are pros and cons to the cohort model, pros and cons to the five day in-person, pros and cons to the four day model as well. So we continue to look at data. Let's go now to a new piece of data as of Friday. I mentioned to you the CDC guidance for schools that was just released that P D E is combing through. They are telling us they are going to react to that data, and we will be receiving that. They didn't give us a timeline. They did tell us don't wait, but I suspect within a few weeks. But we don't need them to go in and look at this data. You know, the CDC has been such a wonderful resource for all of us in trying to navigate this pandemic. We think it's important to note that some of the highlights from the CDC, and I quote, "To enable schools to open safely and remain open, it is important to adopt and consistently implement actions to slow the spread of SARS-CoV two, both in schools and in the community." This means that all community members, students, families, teachers, and school staff should take actions to protect themselves and others where they live, work, learn, and play. In short, success in preventing the introduction and subsequent transmission of SARS-CoV T and CoV two in schools is connected to and facilitated by preventing transmission in the broader community. There is also evidence from the CDC, and all of this is on their page. It's a very lengthy report. But there's evidence that suggests that K to twelve in-person school attendance is not a primary driver across our nation of COVID community transmission. In other words, the schools are not creating that community transmission. It's being created in other ways outside of the school. I quote from the CDC website and updated information as of Friday. For schools to operate in-person learning safely, the association between levels of community transmission and risk of transmission in school must also be considered. Communities that fully implement and strictly adhere to multiple mitigation strategies, especially universal and proper fitting masks, will reduce COVID nineteen incidents within the community as well as within schools to protect students, teachers, and staff members. The CDC also put out a new table. It is a color table. I know you weren't looking forward to going back to colors. But the CDC has indicated that if you have zero to nine new cases per the one hundred thousand people in the past seven days that count, very similar to the P D E and P A D O H, that you are in low transmission as a community. If you have ten to forty nine, you're in moderate transmission. And if you have fifty to ninety nine, you are in substantial transmission or orange. So they have a blue-yellow-orange system. And currently, this county would be in the moderate transmission in the ten to forty nine range. The instructional model, the CDC goes on to relate this transmission rates to what should you do as schools in an instructional model? The CDC recommends full in-person instruction K to twelve when we are in moderate. And they recommend physical distancing of six feet or more to the, and I quote, "greatest extent possible." And as you know, at this point, we are still on the attestation form with the state of Pennsylvania, with the Pennsylvania Department of Education. So at this point, we have to follow six feet when the masks are down, not to the greatest extent possible, but instead, we must follow six feet during lunch when students' masks are down or during a mask break. If we go to moderate again this Friday, we are no longer bound by the attestation form. Other data points I do want to point out and be completely open with our parents and with the public. We cannot maintain six feet of social distancing in every classroom. I want to be honest and open about that. Not every classroom can do this, and it certainly varies from day to day. We had a parent ask us today, can you tell me what rooms won't be able to accommodate it? Well, I can't tell you that because I have no way of knowing how many students will show up tomorrow or Monday. It depends on student attendance. But we will remind you that if we go into this second week of moderate, and we anticipate that we will, based on the data already from Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, that the attestation form no longer applies, although our principals have indicated they will still do their very best, especially at lunch, to maintain six feet of social distance. A question I get asked often as I'm studying this research is, what about the variants? It's on all of our minds, right? I recently heard an interview, and I wish I would have written her name down. I'll try to find this, but it it was by an epidemiologist about the variants. And she was asked, what about the variants? She said, I get asked this all the time by the media. What about the variants? Aren't you concerned? She said, of course, I'm concerned. However, we now know how to better combat and deal with COVID. Therefore, we use the same mitigations and the same safety protocols we already know and we're already doing with COVID to fight these variants, universal masking, washing hands, and the six feet rule. Parents need to understand that we may have to move back and forth if the board makes a decision today between whether that's four days a week, five days a week, or cohort. If these variants take off, we have got to be ready to scale back, and I know that's something the board may want to weigh in on. The next item I get asked a lot about is vulnerable staff members. We absolutely have a duty to protect our teachers and every adult that works in this school district in every building. We have a duty to protect the children, but we also have a duty to protect our staff. And although I've said this before, I'm learning I have to repeat things over and over because people, you know, it's information overload. Even tonight is a lot. This afternoon is a lot of information. I want to remind the public and remind our teachers and our staff members that anyone that was over the age of sixty five was given, employees, were given the opportunity in July in working with our our union to move to the cyber program here at Seneca Valley, our Seneca Valley Academy of Choice. And that was initially primarily teachers. So anyone over the age of sixty five was given that opportunity. Those, there were some that chose to stay for various reasons in the physical in-person instruction model, and there were some who just couldn't move over to the cyber model for various reasons. Maybe it's cafeteria worker, right? We're not going to necessarily serve cafeteria food in that virtual environment, although we do on Fridays. We also gave anyone with an underlying health issue the ability to either take in the teacher's situation a full year of unpaid leave and keep their medical benefits, and we would get a sub, or they could move over to the Seneca Valley Academy of Choice, and most of that work is occurring remotely. And we also worked with the union. If anyone had a family member living in their immediate home that was significantly in the risk area when it came to underlying health issues as they relate to COVID. So we have given a lot of options. I know that doesn't take all of the fear away. But recently, we also, within the last month and a half, we gave our entire staff a survey about if the vaccine is available. This was before we knew about the log jam. If it's available, would you take it? And, you know, how old are you? Do you have underlying health issues? And we allowed them to answer in a confidential survey. And at that point, we had eleven employees, and when I say employees, these aren't just full-time employees. These could be coaches who don't work here full-time or day-to-day subs who don't work full-time, but they are on our campuses for various reasons. We gave them the priority anytime we knew about the availability of vaccines. And I am proud to tell you that our nurses, working closely with our staff, we had eleven in that category, sixty five and over, and/or serious medical condition as it relates to COVID, and they were at risk. And all of them have received either an appointment or their first dose already. So we are now sitting at seventy staff members who have been vaccinated. And I think that's really wonderful. Of course, we'd like all nine hundred and some staff members to be vaccinated. But at this point, we've at least, we at least have seventy, and some of those have already received their second dose, like our school nurses, and are doing well. So I'm pleased to tell you that any chance we have, by way of an example, one of the board members here told me about openings occurring in our community at the Butler Health System, and a number of our employees went there if they qualified in the sixty five and over, or if they qualified under the fourteen to sixty four with underlying health issues, and/or they got their grandparents and their parents vaccinated. And I will tell you, those who have been able to get people in their home or those that they they take care of vaccinated, it's just been a huge burden lift. I, you know, I've talked to them personally, and it's been a huge burden lifted off of their shoulders. So I know that the more and more that the vaccines become available, the better people will feel about being in our schools. But I also recognize that this is not, this may not be appropriate for every family. So every parent and every family need to make choices that best suit their families, their children, their children's learning styles, and what has happened with their children. So at this point, that is all of the data points the board has asked me to share and inform them of. Some of those they got in advance in writing. Some were new as of yesterday or today. So at this point, Mr. President, my COVID nineteen update and data report has concluded. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna say, if there's any questions or comments, we hold them to when we have the motion on the table. We'll just have the discussion all at once then. So we'll we'll move on, looking for public comment. There is no one that has signed up for public comment, so that's gonna take us right into our instruction action. And I'm going to read the motion, and I'll be looking for someone to to make this motion. But for secondary instructional model change, this is beginning Monday, February twenty second, two thousand and twenty one. Secondary students, grade seven through twelve, will return to in-person instruction four days a week, Monday through Thursday, and Fridays will be a remote instruction day. These Fridays will be used for additional cleaning, to conduct case investigation, contact tracing, and to assist in the breaking up of potential of COVID transmission. Live streaming will continue to be an option for all students. In order to prepare for this instructional model change, secondary teachers in grades seven through twelve will be given a half day in service day on Friday, February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one, to prepare for the transition. Therefore, students in grades seven through twelve will receive asynchronous assignments in their afternoon classes. Can I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Is there discussion on this topic? Or questions? Anyone up top? I do not see any. I'm hearing none. I'm sorry, Mr. Peterson.
First of all, thank you, Dr. Vitale, for that information and all of the information you've given us through months of dreary statistics. I do think we're turning a corner. We, as a nation, as a population, are turning a corner. We're not home free by any means. The specter of these variants is the great unknown at this point. It appears that they're more transmissible than the original virus, but less pathogenic. And the surrogate measures there are that we have fewer people in hospital. And the surrogate measures there are that we have fewer people in hospitals, fewer people in ICUs, and fewer people are dying. So if you want to be an optimist, it's pretty easy to be an optimist about this. But I think that I can't be a total optimist, but one of, one of the five of the things, actually, that give me great comfort are the five elements of the CDC's guidance. And I, I think we've done, you've done, you, all of you as staff at Seneca Valley have done just an incredible job. It's unfortunate that we can't just guarantee that every desk in the system is six feet away from the next one. That's just not possible to do. The, the Seneca Valley has gone beyond the five elements with significant work done with the HVAC systems. The significant contact tracing, I know that's one of the five elements, but I think the, the nurses under Ms. White have gone above and beyond what might be defined in the CDC guidance. And as I've said before, in public health, it's never a one-lane road. There's always something else that's, that's popping up that's of concern. And I think increasingly, from reading, as we all do, the, the communication from the parents, the kids are really starting to struggle at home. They're starting to struggle sociologically, psychologically, and in their learning process. So I think we have to, we can't make this decision without taking those factors in consideration. I, for one, think that we're ready. But as you said, and I would emphasize, bold, italic, underline, we have to be ready to pivot at a moment's notice if the spike goes up or if this highly transmissible variant really starts to appear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I'll just add to that real quick. You know, you mentioned it, that we can't guarantee, you know, some of the six-foot spacing, but we will be leaving the other mitigation efforts that we've put up in Plexiglas and things like that. Although they're not perfect, they do help. So we will have those mitigation efforts. And to also clarify that the parents will also have the choice to not send their children back full-time. The, the remote will still be an option for them, and they can still do it on a cohort model if they so choose. You know, that's never been an option or an, an issue, that if parents want to do that, it's something that they can make that decision. So I just wanted to point that out again, and thank you, Mr. Peterson. So any others? Any parting words? And Lisa, I'd ask you to call the roll, please.
Ms. Widow?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bradel?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
And Mr. DiTullio?
Yes.
Motion carries with eight, eight voting in the affirmative and one absent.
Thank you very much. So at this time, is there any other issue to be brought before our board? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Widow. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. All those pose nay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.